That could open up the page for you.
Exactly, that might open your view.
We are now live.
I can live with it this way, too.
Okay, Gary. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Dunn County Board of Supervisors meeting on Wednesday, February 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Like to call the meeting to order. The next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move to approval of the minutes.
Well, you want to call the roll, sir?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Call the roll, please, Julie.
Supervisor Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Bartlett? Supervisor Hedlund?
Here.
Supervisor Score?
Here.
Vice Chair Steen?
Here.
Supervisor Zanz?
Here.
Supervisor Gary Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Maves?
Here.
Supervisor Quinn?
Here.
Supervisor Rogers?
Yes, here.
Supervisor Anderson?
Here.
Supervisor Kinnear?
Here.
Supervisor Crumry?
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese?
Here.
Supervisor Keeter?
Here.
Supervisor Vogel?
Here.
Supervisor McCullough?
Here.
Supervisor Story?
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen?
Here.
Supervisor Niehoff? Supervisor Morehouse?
Here.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Tripp?
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow?
Here.
Supervisor Jensen?
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork?
Here.
Supervisor Bauer?
Here.
Supervisor Lino?
Here.
Supervisor Hartung?
Here.
Before we get to the approval of the minutes, I'd just like to announce that Chairman Bartlett is dealing with a medical issue and will not be with us this evening. Next, I would entertain the approval of the minutes.
I so move. Gary?
I think Brian moved and as a second.
I'll second it.
Larry Bjork seconded. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item number five, presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. A, recognize the retirement of county employees William Hughes, 21 years, and Ellen Blumer, 20 years. We'd like to thank them for their service. And ordinarily, with non-COVID year, they'd be here to get their plaques. I have no other presentations or memorials. Public comments, Krista, did we have anything along the line of public comments?
There were no public comments.
Thank you very much. Next order of business is the appointments. The Library Planning Committee, the IFLIS representative, term expires January 2024. Reappoint James Tripp. The above chair appointments needs board's confirmation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved Supervisor McCullough.
Supervisor Morehouse seconds.
Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. The next one is the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Term expires January 2024. Reappoint Gary Steen. Next one is the Passenger Rail Commission. Term to be determined, appoint Gary Steen. And these appointments are the chairs. The next order of business is number eight, the report of the county manager. Paul?
Thank you, sir. First item, as we have been doing, is the update on COVID-19 in Dunn County. The email that I put out today, after talking with KT Gallagher, our Director of Public Health, we are now at 4,204 confirmed cases of COVID-19 among Dunn County residents since the start of the pandemic. Eighty of those are active, and we have another 327 that are probable. The sad news to report is that we had one more death of a Dunn County resident from COVID-19, bringing our total there to 27. The good news is that the average number of cases per day new in the county has been dropping. The Health Department is preparing to issue a recommendation that will increase the maximum size of gatherings to 25 persons indoors and 50 outdoors. Not with, not that with this weather, a lot of groups of 50 or more are going to be outdoors, but it's progress. We are ramping up our vaccine distribution. It is a complicated process, this vaccine distribution. There are a number of things that are beyond our control, including whether or not we receive the vaccines we request and the type of vaccine that we get, and even the syringes that we have. The more, the better. Syringes are smaller gauge that allows more doses to be pulled out of a vial. We can't get those right now. And so it complicates our ability to get as many doses out as possible. That's the update, though, for COVID-19. If there's any questions, or perhaps if Supervisor Morehouse, as the Chair of our Health and Human Services Board, has anything more to add.
No, Mr. Miller, you've done a good job.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Hearing none. In your packet of materials, you received the purchase orders over $40,000. They are all pretty self-explanatory. There are a number of annual payments for services and tax, bed tax, at the neighbors of Dunn County. There are also a number of annual payments to our library's distributions through our county clerk's office. Highway has a snow removal equipment purchase. And IT also has a purchase related to our Google Apps, which is a service that we pay for. Any questions on any of the purchase orders over 40,000?
I do have a question.
Here. I saw Gary Bjork's hand up there. Gary?
I'll thank you. Are we getting our money's worth from the bed tax that we pay the state? Or is that something that maybe we could put on the legislative agenda next Monday? I mean, you know, what are we actually getting to pay that $280,000 to the state? I know they come out and inspect the facility, but what else do they do for that kind of money?
That's, that's a very good question, Supervisor Bjork. I will note that, and I will ask Carmen Flunker, the Administrator of the Neighbors, if we can perhaps give you a better answer than I would give you off the cuff tonight.
Excuse me, Paul?
Yes.
At least in the past, the nursing homes do not get the bed tax. The bed tax goes to others.
That's absolutely correct. I understood Supervisor Bjork's question to be, what does the state do with the tax that they collect that goes back to or benefits the county?
That was my question.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. Supervisor Rogers?
Yeah, well, my question was going to be if you could help explain what that bed tax is for. I'm not really fully understanding what it is.
That was my question as well. Supervisor Bauer here, I was going to ask the same question.
The bed tax is like a lot of other things. It's a revenue generator for the state. Sometimes, I don't want to speculate too much. Sometimes, though, trying to track what tax dollars is like trying to decide where do the individual electrons that go into electrical grid go? You really can't say. I mean, it's part of a revenue stream. But there are services that the state provides to support the congregate living, the skilled nursing facilities. But I will get more detail on those from Ms. Flunker, and I will make sure that the email, an email response goes to all supervisors.
Thank you for your questions.
I have one more question.
Larry Bjork?
Mr. Chairman, could I have an explanation on the library dollars again? And specifically, I'm most interested in why we're paying the city of Eau Claire for L.A. Phillips Library?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tripp, would you like to address that?
I would.
Go ahead, please.
State statute requires that any use of any library by a citizen of the county be paid for by the county of their residents. So anytime a resident of Dunn County uses any library in a contiguous county, we are required to pay that library 70% at a minimum, 70% of their actual circulation costs. So what that large payment to the Eau Claire Library means is that we've got a lot of our residents of Dunn County using the Eau Claire Library.
Go ahead, Mr. Bjork.
Likewise, likewise, pay us as well.
What would you say would be a large number of Dunn County residents using the L.A. Phillips?
I don't know the numbers right offhand, but you can probably, well, no, I'm not going to speculate. I don't know what the number is, but I do know that when the Elk Mound Library branch opened, that number decreased a little bit because now those residents are able to use the library in Dunn County, which was one of our intentions when that happened.
Supervisor Bjork?
Then regarding Elk Mound, do we receive any revenues from Eau Claire County from Eau Claire County residents maybe using something at Elk Mound?
Yes. We, we receive funding for our libraries that are used by the residents of contiguous counties that don't live in Dunn County. So it's just like when we pay outside the county libraries, they also pay our libraries in Dunn County. And that includes Menominee, Boyceville, Colfax, and the Elk Mound branch of the Menominee Library.
And Sandcrick, too.
And.
Don't forget Sandcrick.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, here, Mr. Tripp. Any other questions about the purchase orders over 40,000? Hearing none, we'll move on then.
The last item.
Oh, excuse me. Yep. C, new, new chief information officer.
Right. The last item I have is to announce that we have hired a new chief information officer. You'll recall that Eric Edgberg, who'd been with the county for 25-plus years, retired at the end of last year. We have hired Dan Dunbar to be our new CIO. He comes to us from UW Stout, where he was for some 19 years. He came very, very highly recommended, and we're very pleased to have him on board. In fact, he started on Tuesday, so we have every expectation of great things from Dan. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Paul. Moving on, number nine, the reports of the departments, county clerk, transit commission, medical examiner.
Supervisor Bauer, I got one question, quick.
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Bauer.
Do we have to approve those payments over 40,000?
No, sir, they're simply a report.
All right, thanks.
The department's reporting on the county clerk, transit commission, medical examiner, and you should have those reports in your packet. The reports will not be presented. Just, are there any questions on the reports from the board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
For Julie, I guess some of us have received a letter. Apparently, some of those Dominion machines must be in our county. I guess I just wanted to maybe have her explain the kinds of machines that we have, and probably that there's no concern, but I thought maybe we should at least ask the question.
So in my report, the election equipment purchase is not in the scope of my report. I don't know if court counsel, pardon me? Okay. So with the election equipment purchase, the county does not unilaterally pick an election vendor. It is a joint decision with the municipalities based on a variety of factors. Each municipality, i.e. town, village, or city, pays for their own machines and their own equipment, and each municipality, and each municipality buys that equipment. The county was not involved in the completion of the purchase agreements between Command Central and each municipality, nor any funding or payments from the county for that equipment. So each municipality purchases their own equipment. It goes through their own municipal boards for approval and vetting. And I really can't speak to how all 30 municipalities approve their purchases. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, primarily, I guess, what is the, what vendors do we utilize?
Well, we don't, we have an election vendor, Command Central, that provides the services to the equipment.
I'm not getting.
Of the equipment.
Julie's headset, I think, is breaking up.
So, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, we don't really have contact with the vendor. We have an election company that we utilize to provide the service and the sales of all that. Dominion is the manufacturer of the equipment. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but currently, we use Command Central.
Well, I think it explains where we get our equipment from and how we get it. It also basically says that if we have a constituent that asks us if we have Dominion equipment, we can say yes. And of course, I can also say I'm not concerned about it, but I at least needed to know what to tell them. So I think you've answered my question, Julie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Supervisor Story. Are there any other questions on the reports? Hearing none, we'll move along. Number 10, consideration of resolutions, reports, and ordinances from the standing committees. A, Committee on Administration, A1, ordinance amending the County Code of Ordinances, County Code of Ordinances, Section 3.16, Paren 3, regarding employee compensation. This is the first reading. I would need a motion and a second. Then if there's any discussion, we'll have it. Would you like to address this, Supervisor Vaughn? Hedlund?
Certainly, Gary, thank you.
Well, hold on. Hold, Vaughn, I guess I got ahead of myself here. We need a motion and a second, then we can discuss.
I so move. Supervisor Calabrese?
Okay, thank you.
I'll second. Tim, lean out.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now is the time to have the discussion, I guess. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Mr. Steen. This is a, a, a mending ordinance, this amending ordinance is based on the fact that it makes the steps that we have laid out in our compensation package for our employees, for our non-represented employees, to be subject to the, the board itself in determining its budget. And so if the board feels that it's possible within the budget to go ahead and word steps of grade for the employees, they can do so. But this ordinance spells out the fact that if the budget cannot handle that, or there's not money available for that to take place, then it will not happen. So it's, and again, this is a first reading, but basically, it's based on adjusting the fact that the budget has to have the room in it, in a sense, for us to allow steps of grade to happen amongst employees.
Thank you, Supervisor Hedlund. Are there any other questions? This item will be on the county board agenda for a second reading in March. There's no vote tonight. 10, number two, resolution approving continuation of self-insured workers' compensation program. I need a motion in a second?
So moved Supervisor McCullough.
I've got Jody beat you to the punch on that one. Who's the second?
And I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion in addressing this? Supervisor Hedlund, would you like to address this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Steen. This is a, spelling out the fact that we wish to continue on, on the basis of having our own self-insured workers' compensation program. It's something we've been doing for a number of years. According to state statute, we can do this, providing that we follow the rules that are laid out by the state statutes in reporting any claims of compensation and keeping proper records. So we've done this in the past, and it's, it saves us, hopefully, a considerable amount of money in most years by offering this fund ourselves.
Thank you, Supervisor Hedlund. Are there any questions concerning this issue?
Listen, Mr. Steen?
Yes, Supervisor Bjork?
So what is our fund balance in that? Because I know it kind of goes up and down. Could you give me any idea what the fund balance is, that's self-insured?
That is not, unfortunately, a number I have in front of me, Supervisor Bjork, but I can get that for you and send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions? I think an email to all supervisors would be in order on that, Mr. Miller.
Will do.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried. 10B, Health and Human Services Board, a resolution adopting a community development block grant, citizen participation plan. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, Supervisor Morehouse moves.
Is there a second?
I'll second Supervisor Lino.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second addressing this resolution. Supervisor Morehouse?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We have two resolutions on the agenda tonight pertaining to a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant COVID program. The grants administered by the State Department of Administration are for COVID prevention, mitigation, and aftermath. We have two. I note with the vice chair's permission that Chris Corporala has joined our meeting, and I might defer to her for a brief explanation, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely. Ms. Corporala?
So these were, this is a grant, that opportunity that came up. There was money that was distributed out from the Department of Administration through CDBG to the area, to the, oh, excuse me, by, dippied up by regional planning districts. And so each regional planning district was given a amount of money, and then the counties within those districts were able to apply for that. Encouraged to large projects because the administrative requirements to receive a CDBG grant are significant, and they're the same whether you receive a small amount of money or a large amount of money. So we were encouraged to seek larger amounts, or larger projects. We were received, we had to, so the city of Menominee Police Chief, Eric Atkinson, Sarah Benedict from the CJCC, and I worked together to submit a grant to the DOA for this money. And we wrote it for three parts. One part will be to fund emergency, non-congregate sheltering for homelessness through stepping stones. The second part of it will be to fund case management services to transition people out of that homeless sheltering and into more sustainable housing. And the third will be to funding to eliminate the obstacles that get in the way of people being able to obtain permanent housing. So for instance, a security deposit and up to six months rent. The total amount, which we filed an intent to apply, and then the grant is due next week, full grant is due next week, although the information is from the Department of Administration that the money is ours as long as we've met all of these administrative requirements. And so the full amount of the grant is $300,000 plus $39,000 worth of administrative costs for our efforts at administering it. So it'll be $339,000.
Thank you very much, Chris. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next order of business is 10B2, resolution authorizing submission of community development block grant coronavirus, CDBG, dash CV, application. I would entertain a motion to adopt this in a second.
I so move.
Larry Bjork motions, is there a second?
I'll lean out.
Diane Morehouse, seconds. Now addressing this resolution, Supervisor Morehouse, would you like to talk to it, or would you like Chris Corporala to do that?
Well, just briefly, this is, this is related to the same grant. These are two of the administrative requirements for submittal of the grant, and this one actually authorizes this board to go ahead and submit the proposal.
Chris, would you want to add anything or not?
I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion or questions by the supervisors? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next order of business is 10BC, Judiciary Law Committee, C1, resolution adopting a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force and barring of entrances and exits for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. I need a motion in a second, then we can discuss.
So move. Supervisor Kinnear moves.
All right. Tripp motion, Kinnear second. Now we open for discussion. Supervisor Tripp, would you like to address this?
Thank you. This is a requirement, and basically, what it requires is a policy of nonviolence, as explained in the, in the motion, but those policies are in place already. This is a federal requirement for any government entity that's accepting the CDBG dollars that we discussed in the last resolution. These policies in the Sheriff's Department are already in place, have been in place. So this is simply meeting the paperwork requirements.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion regarding this motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bjork, go ahead.
This is a very interesting way that's written, that you described it as nonviolent. I can't remember, but anyway, my question to this is, you know, nonviolent demonstrations also turn to mobs, and mobs need to be controlled. And a year ago, when we had the demonstration on Man and Crescent, and people assembled, it was not a problem or anything like that, but also at the same time throughout the country... But also at the same time throughout the country, there was many demonstrations that maybe started out as nonviolent. That turned violent and the, the focus of the demonstration turned into disrupt, this. Destroying property and specifically historical property. So I guess my question to this is, when it talks about not barring exits. Uh, are we assured that if we have a nonviolent demonstration at Main and Crescent? On the stout administration building, that uh. Whoever is supposed to be in charge of controlling uh, what might turn into violence, that Mabel Tainer Memorial? Is a safe structure? Or does that there, does that, is there a possibility? That that nonviolent demonstration might find, you know, more. Um, potency to demonstrating on the steps of the Mabel Tainer. And then who knows what goes from there? I mean, I don't want our police to be tied, is, is what I'm saying.
Uh, thank you Supervisor, yeah Supervisor Tripp?
Um, if you look at the resolution closely, you'll notice that it applies only to facilities that are subject to our jurisdiction. So it wouldn't apply to the Mabel Tainer, it wouldn't apply to stout buildings, wouldn't apply to any of those things. Uh, it also, uh, and I've been assured by the sheriff that it in no way uh, restricts the sheriff. In the application of appropriate uh, methods to prevent crime. Uh, and whether that's violent crime or nonviolent crime. Um, basic, well, I'm not gonna get into it, but basically this is a um, a measure that. Um, ensures that recipients of the CDBG money do not use it. To prohibit, to establish certain facilities and prohibit people from entering them. So Larry, in your case, for example, you couldn't use this county money uh, to build a shed and put a lock on. So if you were planning on doing that, get that out of your mind.
Well, thanks for warning me ahead of time. But I guess uh, yeah, I, I don't think that we can ignore the fact. That probably the biggest powder keg in the country is ninety miles away with a George Floyd uh, case. And I just want uh, our people able to uh, do what they need to do to maintain order. If it gets crazy.
Again, in, in, in no way, uh, again, this applies only to facilities in our jurisdiction. And it in no way prohibits the sheriff from taking appropriate action uh, whenever there's uh, order to be maintained. It's, it's for an entirely different purpose than that. And you know, we, we discussed this at some length that uh, judiciary and law. And um, as a matter of fact, even made a few modifications, thanks to Supervisor Rogers. And uh, I'm, got every confidence that this will uh, cover uh, our requirements. Without inhibiting our ability to maintain order.
Uh, thank you both supervisors. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
And go ahead, but, go, go ahead. Go ahead Supervisor Jensen.
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, who makes the final decision on whether it was violent or not? Is that would be the sheriff or a higher up? Person on the chain?
That responsibility is the sheriff's.
Okay.
Yeah, any other question? You're, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Uh, yes Supervisor Rogers.
Um, so I thought at the committee, we took out that very last sentence and ended it, nonviolent demonstrations.
Uh, I.
What I've got.
You, alright, let, let me get this straight now. Uh, Supervisor Tripp and Supervisor Rogers, wh- what? Uh, does your reading of the? Resolution say?
Are you referring Supervisor Rogers, this is the corporation counsel, and I drafted this and edited it after your meeting. Are you referring to the last sentence in the background information?
Oh, I am so sorry. I, I'm reading, when, when you first read it, you included that and I pulled it up and I'm on the wrong spot. I apologize.
Not a problem, not a problem. Always good to have a question. Uh, any other, any other discussions or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, the next order of business is ten C two, a resolution supporting allocations of funds for PSA PS grants. Through the Police and Fire Protection Fund. Uh, I need a motion in a second.
Well, they'll make a motion Supervisor Bauer.
Bauer, Supervisor Bauer makes a motion, who seconds?
Tripp.
Supervisor Tripp seconds. Uh, speaking to the motion Supervisor Tripp?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is a resolution that originally was to come before the board last month. Uh, we took it back to committee, made a few minor revisions to kind of catch up to the uh, current legislative status. In essence, it is a resolution that copies one that we passed a few years ago. Asking for additional funding to upgrade our nine-one-one system. Um, without going into the background in detail, which has been covered before. Uh, what this is doing is asking for an initial allotment and an annual um. Door's not allotment, what's word I'm looking for, the, the uh.
Appropriation.
Government to support the maintenance of the uh, of the system. Um, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but basically this is a repeat of one we've passed in about two or three years ago.
Thank you Supervisor Tripp. Is there any questions for Supervisor Tripp or discussion regarding this uh, uh, resolution? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Uh, those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next order of business is announcements. A, there's a special meeting of the county board for legislative action, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, that's in our agenda here. B, the next regular county board meeting will be March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. C, uh, Julie will be circulating a petition for a special meeting in March regarding capital improvement plan. And she'll send that out via email like she's done in the past. Uh, having concluded our business.
Is there any other announcements?
Any other announcements from the uh, supervisors, excuse me?
I don't have an announcement, but someone posted a number to call for an appointment to get the shot at the medicine shop. Could they repost that, please? It was under chat.
Yes, that was me, Sarah. Uh, I'll, how about if I just email you separately?
You're muted, Sarah.
Thanks, Mike.
Sarah, let me share. I've already gone on and scheduled two appointments, so they are out there.
Well, thank you all for your attendance tonight. Let's hope we all get vaccinated when we can. Uh, when I came down this evening, uh, the roads were slippery. If you have to drive anywhere, be careful. And uh, being that our business is done, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Bye.
Night every, good night everyone.